I'd like to call and order the regular board meeting of Tuesday, February 17, 2015 at 7:00 PM. Your call please. Mr. Rocha?
Here.
Mr. Benio?
Here.
Mr. Banachi? Mrs. Matthews?
Here.
Mrs. Powers?
Here.
Please stand before the leaders of the flag. Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America and to the Republic for its stand, one nation on our back, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we move on to comments in the audience, I would like just to remind everyone in attendance of the procedures for this part of the meeting. This is a time of the board meeting where citizens have an opportunity to bring comments or concerns before the board. When you address the board, please state your name and address and identify the organization you represent the panel. Comments should be directed to the board as a whole and not any one individual. Please refrain from any personal attack or inappropriate language during the comments. Please also note that this is a time where we, as board members, simply listen to your comments, so please do not be upset when there is not a response from board members. Each person is limited to three minutes for their comments. The board will reinforce their three-minute time limit out of respect for other speakers and the people in attendance at tonight's meeting. Thank you. Are there any comments beyond this discussion? Yes?
Hi Jennifer. I told you I wanted to make a quick comment. My only comment I've had in the last five weeks is I'm kind of embarrassed by the way what's going on with this school board since I've been gone. I do want to let you know that I think you made a mistake letting the treasurer go. I also think that every one of those 25 teachers that I wrote the law for while I was gone, I read pretty much everything that was public. And none of them were caught or given a chance. And I have certainly not loved my thinking in completely, I know that. And I don't think that anything can be done about it now, I'm sure, but I think the treasurer has a case if she wants to use it because there's no mistaking fees and so on and reasons for us. And that's the only reason we should be able to acknowledge that I can't drive this stuff. Thank you.
Your turn. No comments. This time, we will move on to our presentation. Wait to have Mrs. Brith introduce our presentation.
Good evening. I wanted to be able to introduce the individuals that are presenting for you this evening. These three fantastic teachers are fulfilling new roles this year as our academic technology specialists, and they prepared for you a presentation to provide an overview of the kind we're good with our students and with our teachers. So I'd like to introduce to you Mrs. Fadali, Mrs. Maddox, and Mrs. Marquette.
We have apologized for all the wires and the tilt, but we don't have a choice at this point, so.
I'm Mrs. Fadali, or Kristin Fadali. I work at Fish Creek and River View.
I'm Nancy Marquette. I work at Indian Trail Elementary.
And I'm Jennifer Maddox. I work at Woodland Elementary and Echo Hills Elementary. We were asked to present a little informative session about what our daily lives are like, and we thought instead of you sitting there listening to us go on and on, you might like instead to hear something directly from the students, directly from the teachers. So this is a new little techie thing we learned about this year. It's called Adobe Voice, and that's what you'll hear, their voices.
Then after, we're going to have some students share some of their presentations as well.
My name is Jackie. I'm in fourth grade. I would use a Chromebook, Google Doc, through the presentation in Word form. With the Classroom, Big Universe, Polar Tales, Timeline, Gmail, Web Quest, Booklets, Our Code, Youth Ohio, and Vimeo.
Hi, I'm a member of the American Student Association. Technology class has taught me how to express my ideas in very different ways, such as Google Docs and making Google presentations.
Hi, I'm Esther Sloan. I'm in fourth grade at Indian Trail. This year is different from last year in terms of technology because we are doing most of our learning on the computer, or the computer will contribute to our learning. We also use the computer for something every day. I have learned how to use Google Classroom and Timeline. I have learned how to do adjustments to my computer. I've become a faster typer. I'm interested in learning how to use all my fingers to type.
We use a smart board for learning meetings. We work together and by ourselves. We use the iPad for listening and reading. Work on writing and data self. We check the weather. We use the computers for listening and reading with books, booklets. Google Classroom is this, you know.
Hi, I'm Lauren Moxley. I'm in fourth grade. I learn differently using technology because seeing it with your online is different than reading a textbook and sometimes more fun than reading a textbook. Not always, sometimes it's a little hard, but Miss Maddox helps.
Everybody likes that Mrs. Jerratt doesn't have to take a lot of time, spend more time to like print stuff. She could just post something up on Google Classroom and we could do it from there.
My name's Elia and I'm in kindergarten, and I like to learn how to use letters on the keyboard correctly.
My name is Cameron Gordon. I'm in fourth grade, and last year we wrote with a pencil and now we type with on cloaks.
Learning has changed because now everyone has their own computer. When you have your own computer, you can't just rely on your iPad to get the words down. You have to do it yourself.
My name is Carla DiLorenzo and I'm in fourth grade. Technology helps me with writing because it's better to know if you spelled the word wrong right away.
I like to do math a lot. I can go online to do math. I have played Pac-Man, Pirate Ship, and other games.
The bear, when you get yapped, it comes to life and it's really cool because it starts to dance and it can do different moves and everything like pops up like it's on the paper.
My name is Ben Mosley and I'm in third grade, and I discovered new ways to have fun while learning.
My name is Ella Dunmeier and I am in kindergarten, and I love to play learning given on the computer.
I'm Kyle Mitchell. I'm in fourth grade, and I want to be an author when I grow up, so I don't know how to make a Google Doc into a book.
My name is Jamie DiLorenzo. I teach fourth grade at Echo Hills. Mrs. Maddox has been able to support me in many areas in the classroom. One particular tool that's been very useful is using Google Classroom. She introduced me to this classroom management system that I use daily. I'm able to share classroom assignments, websites, and lessons with my students that they can access from home or at school.
Technology time on Thursdays is by far their favorite time of the week where they get to see, learn, and practice new skills, explore on their own, and produce some really great work, online research, and typing reports, for instance, and they are only second graders. We also use iPads and/or Chromebooks daily in some capacity, whether it's using Booklets, Big Universe, Brain Pop Junior, or Listen to Reading during Daily Five, or the Simbolo page for math games.
My name is Sue Herka-Huck and I'm a third grade teacher at Echo Hills Elementary. Technology has made such a great positive impact in my classroom this year. Having technology in my class has taught me how to engage my students more through programs like Google Classroom, Big Universe, and Creating One Class. I'm able to have students read at his or her own level and answer comprehension questions that best meet their needs.
I've been able to accomplish far more with my students in the world of technology with her help in my classroom. She has supported me in many ways, especially getting my students comfortable logging into their Google accounts and using Google Classroom. We have been able to use Big Universe for the students to read independently, complete assigned books, and research different countries. Additionally, we used Adobe Voice with my students as a way to present a summary of an assigned book from Big Universe. In the past, I've used a fair amount of technology in my classroom. However, with the support that I've received this year and the collaboration with Nancy, we have pushed my first graders further than we ever both thought possible.
My name is Carrie Miller and I am a third grade teacher at Echo Hills. I feel my teaching has greatly improved because of the integration of technology in the classroom. Mrs. Maddox has spent time collaborating with the third and fourth grade teachers to help connect different subjects with technology.
Kristen has helped the teachers at Fish Creek feel comfortable and as if they're not alone when trying to implement the skills that our students need to know in the ever-changing world of how technology looks in our classrooms these days. To me, the inspiration that I've seen from providing to the teachers at Fish Creek is definitely making a difference in the world in that the teachers are doing things with technology in their students that they never thought that they would ever be able to do on their own, and I greatly appreciate all her efforts.
My name is Mary Ellen Nizzi, and I am second grade teacher at Indian Trail Elementary. Tech is ongoing and ever-changing. With the help of my new tech specialist, I'm able to keep up with the world and keep my students up to date with technology.
Because of Nancy, I've been able to have Google Classroom. We use tech across the curriculum, including our units on force and motion, biographies, timelines, and in our math units. But one of my students' favorite places to go is a place that Nancy introduced us to called Big Universe. It's an online library the students use during Daily Five. They are very excited when they get time to read to themselves to use this. Having Nancy gives me and my students the support to learn and grow across the curriculum with technology.
Hi, my name is Cara Morales. I teach third grade at Indian Trail, and I wanted to talk to you about how I integrated technology into my instruction with the support of Nancy Marquette, our tech specialist. One thing that I've used this year that I've never used before is Google Classroom. That was introduced to me by Nancy, and it is fabulous. The kids have learned to go to video links that I can embed as a teacher on any concept. They also can do web quests, which supports my inquiry stance in the classroom. They've become very independent about going to the library media page, which also was introduced to them by Mrs. Marquette.
We have to pause for a second till we switch computers. Day in the light of technology.
Hi, my name is Reese Riesman. I'm in grade three in Woodland Elementary School.
Hi, my name is Alex Roberts-Crawley and I'm in grade three at Woodland Elementary School. I'm going to show you how to make a robot and learn how to do perimeter and in a Google drawing. First, for our robot, we put a rectangle for a edge. Then we put another rectangle for the body. The next step was to put measurements on two sides of the rectangles. So since we only put two measurements, it was harder to find the perimeter because there's four sides. But we knew about rectangles, that two sides were the same, so we didn't have to click all four on. Next, we decided we needed some legs for our robot. So we made her a leg, but then we wanted them to be the same length and the same size. So we copied and pasted. Then the next step is to put the measurements on the glass. Here's an example of a completed robot. The last step was to share the robot with another classmate so that they could try to find the perimeter.
Hi, my name is Maketa Rice and I am in grade three from Woodland Elementary.
Hello, my name is Robert Hodges and I'm in grade three at Woodland Elementary. Our assignment was to make a new park or playground for Stowe City Schools, which is a real-life, real-world situation. And it will help us learn about perimeter and area. First, we made the area for our playground and we labeled each side. Now we're going to make the area for the swings, and we're going to go to Shapes and go to the rectangle and make a rectangle. We want to label our sides, so we go to Text Box, and we make a text box and we do our measurements. We're only going to do two measurements because we know that when you have a rectangle, two equal sides are the equal measurements. Here's an example of a finished park. Our last step was to share it with the classmates so a classmate could find the perimeter and area of the park.
Hello, my name is Christina. I'm here and I'm in grade two and I'm from Fish Creek Elementary.
Hi, my name is Alex Tejho from Fish Creek Elementary School, second grade, and we're going to show you how you can use Google Docs and Google Classroom to work on things. This is Google Classroom. This is Google Classroom. We use it to find assignments. Teachers don't have to print something. They just send out worksheets to people by computers. They use this cool technology in Google Classroom. They... They send out assignments, and when you use assignments, all you have to do is press open, click on it, and you have it open. You don't need to ask the teacher for the paper. Click on it. You could just open it up in Google Classroom. It'll happen.
This is Fish Creek Library, and to Big Universe, this is the conference.
So we're doing a Habitat project, so what books were you looking at for what Habitat, Christina?
For my first Habitat, Ocean, and it was in the...
So she's got Ocean, and her first animal, Dolphins. So what would you go? Some of them do you...
Like what color the dolphins were and like how long they were.
And then you would add the next step. There's Alex is a step ahead of where we're going, so Alex, tell us what you did with all your research.
First, I researched Google Docs to work on it. Then with Google Docs, I made that big image and I made it into a Google slide. First, I have a title, then I have a list of contents, some pictures, and then explanations about how everything is and what it will look like.
All right, at the first, thank you.
I'm Gavin Steenmeyer. I'm from Indian Trail, and I'm in fourth grade.
This is what happens. Every day of them. I hope they unplug it from the source.
You practiced this earlier today at school. But you'll get to see how quickly he can sign in to his account.
Well, should we add him? No, I'm... The money he had, it doesn't need that mention for it. How? It's already on. That would be awesome.
I'm going to have our next presentation come up so they can... I don't want to introduce this presentation or all the work they put into it. This will give them a couple minutes instead of everybody staring at them and making orders. It's like harder work, probably. Yeah. This way I'll give them a few minutes and I'll speak very slowly. At this time, I would like to bring up Mrs. Jennifer Miller, and who is going to do a presentation on behalf of the Stowe Band Parents.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Miller, and I am here on behalf of the Stowe and More Falls Band Parents Association. We're going to be very brief. First, I want to say thank you for getting me on the agenda tonight, and I'd also like to thank Mrs. Rocha at Central Office for all of her help. The Band Parents Organization is a group of really good, hardworking people who are committed to the success of the Stowe bands. Among many things that they do, they work tirelessly on the fundraising, and they are very, very good at it. The last 14 years, they've contributed $482,499.44. The Band Parents are excited to donate $32,040.40 worth of instruments, music, repairs, and various other supplies for the 2013-2014 school year. Thank you.
I'd like to make one comment. I spent my two years as a band treasurer, so I know it was a lot of work giving them money and all the repairs and equipment, and keep going, keep those instruments. It really helps the school district a lot. I'd like to second that. Everybody knows it's organizations like yours that make the school districts around it without the best support. It's absolutely phenomenal what you've done, so thank you very much on behalf of all of our students. Thank you. Very good. Thank you. How are we feeling over there?
Good.
All right.
So we've been assigned from this market a timeline that we have to do from the French and Indian Wars end to the Revolutionary Wars beginning, and we had a couple of things that we had like include at all times and put in pictures, and stuff. That's what we have to do. And we use these four links that she gave us, the timeline, a video, the Ducksters, which is a Revolutionary War thing, and we've got a lot of other stuff, and Big Universe. And what are you going to be looking at? Ducksters. So on Ducksters, we're going to look at a lot of stuff. You can look at history, geography, geography, science, and some games. And I used for mine, I looked at a couple of these, and it was a really good experience, and it was really good for finding information. Those are good links that you put on.
Go ahead. Go ahead and try to talk. This is Big Universe. He also was assigned some books by his teacher, Mrs. Lawback, to use for this project. And I think he needs to... So you can see his bookshelf right there?
So the books I have on my bookshelf that he'd used was a book about Abigail Adams writing of the American Revolution, George Washington, and causes of the revolution. And the causes of the revolution, I used mostly because we were writing down what cause and what things happened before the Revolutionary War. And this is where we made our timeline. It's on, uh, we write the, you can do a lot more stuff. It's all about timeline here. And you can organize your timeline by date, time, or event. And you could write, you could make your own, you just have to type in your name. And all you have to do is type in your name and then what your title is. So let's say, so then if you want to change it, you can just go up here and say like, fourth grade experience. You could just change it however many times you want. And then to put it in text on, it says down here, edit, and it says click tab. And then you would, this would come up, so you could label it like, first day, and then a short description. We did lots of fun things. So, and then you could write that and then just save it. And then this is how mine turned out. We had to do, we had to add a lot, like a couple of them we had to put in. So she told us to put them in. I put the French Revolutionary War's beginning to when, back then, to Paul Pierce Midnight Ride. It was a date after the Revolutionary War started.
And then what did you do with your timeline?
Oh, we went back to, we uploaded it to Google Drive. And then we went to turn it in. You just click on the title of what it is. You choose it. I already put mine in. And then if you click the submit button, and it says you're done, you just turn it in.
We have one final thing. I know we went a little over, but we wanted the board members to experience what a kid might use the computer. So we have some Chromebooks coming over right now. So bring over our Chromebooks. We have like maybe two kids for adults learning to help you. So just showing you how to do it too. And a teacher would have to launch this. It's a free app. So we've got another computer there ready. We need one more here. Then we need one in the corner and one on the other side. So how do you launch it while the kids are helping them? Oh, we need to. So we've got one there and it's up. And then. As you guys are getting ready, this is just going to be six questions about the presentation. So like the first one, it'll be like, what is your picture of? And then you'll see like the areas on the screen and you get to pick the correct answer and kids are there to help as well. So you can see the screens. So there's one, two, three, four, five, six people. One more person. Who doesn't have a green screen that says I'm in? All right, we're ready. Now, what is the rule, oh, I need one off, the title of the whole thing is a rule back down to gosh, look, but Big Universe, is used for what? Was it reading, research, independent reading, or for games? How did our kids use this? Good job. All of you guys ready? Together, students can what? Are we helping each other or are we wanting them to work alone?
Oh, I went first again.
This student is what? There'll be a picture of a kid. What is the student doing? Are they reading? Are they off-class? Are they using the Google Drawn to show understanding of perimeter? Are they playing on the playground? And each one of them has to make sure there's a robot. Google Classroom is what? Well, even in California, is it not a Stow elementary school? Is it a third system? Is it an online learning management tool? And last question, the symboloo could be found where? So where would the kids find the symboloo? Do they go to a book? Do they go to the library in the elementary basement in Stow? Do they go to a magazine? Do they go to the chalkboard? And last question, what is the role of the academic technology specialist? I don't know what all that is. With the integrating, you came for Ohio New Generation Learning Standards. Are we working with the teachers for their techniques? Are we introducing new study learning opportunities? Or are we doing all of those things? And what's the point? Then the children technically that activate the symboloo get to grade it. So did you have fun? Do you think you could learn from something like this? How are you feeling? Really excited? So-so? Were you mad the whole time? Thank you guys for really going on.
Next, we have the minutes for January 29th, 2015, February 3rd, 2015, 4:00 AM. Hi. Next, we move to a treasurer's report recommendations. I'd like to do this night images, Dave Orman.
Osborne.
Osborne. Dame Osborne, has lots of experience, only 28 years with line school district. Okay, in your court.
Okay, we have two recommendations I'd like to make. First one is to approve the financial reports for January.
Second?
Roll call please.
Mr. Armstrong.
Hi.
Mrs. Bedio.
Hi.
Ms. Matthews.
Hi.
And Mrs. Powers.
Hi.
And the second item I'd like to recommend is the check register that shows the house payables for October, January.
So, second?
Roll call please.
Mr. Armstrong.
Hi.
Mrs. Bedio.
Hi.
Ms. Matthews.
Hi.
Hi.
And now we move to the superintendent's recommendations. Mr. Brad?
Thank you. We will start with personnel recommendations. We have six certified retirements to start with. Joanne Armstrong retiring as grade three teacher at Woodland. Ed Porzek retiring as high school science teacher. Larry Comar as Lakeview gifted teacher. Mary Rich as remedial tutor at Holy Family. Sharon Sullivan as grade six teacher at Lakeview. And Rosalind Waugh Harris as high school intervention specialist. All combined total 123 years of service from those teachers. And that would be a tremendous loss, losing that type of experience, but we wish them well, best, and thank you for their service. We also have two classified retirements and I would like to recognize them for their services as well. Gerald Saluka, class three custodian at Kempton, and Cassandra Wheatley, class three bus driver and cook at Lakeview. I'd like to thank them and wish them well as well. Next is home instruction tutors for 2014-2015. These individuals are willing to do home instruction on as needed basis. This is for students who for one reason are under home bound for an extended period of time and we need certified educators to work with them. Next would be certified substitutes and these are all exhibit three. These are additional recommendations for certified substitute less than 2014-15 school year. We also have supplementals for the 14-15 school year. I asked the U of P for the coaches for our spring sports and our assistant wrestling coach at Kempton, which is a late addition. If you're wondering why that one's kind of out of place, I'm sure it was a late addition to that appointment. And then we have leaves of absence and requesting that we approve three leave of absence, which may remain confidential for obvious reasons. And then please see the classified employee recommendations and miscellaneous attachments for movement within the district to different positions. Those are all the personnel recommendations I have to make at this time. We're gonna do this consent. Go through. Okay. Next, letter B. Everybody okay? Yeah, that's fine. You want to do a consent? You want to go on each one? Okay, go ahead.
Do I have a motion for the personnel recommendations?
Second?
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Armstrong.
Hi.
Mrs. Bedio.
Hi.
Mrs. Matthews.
Hi.
Mrs. Powers.
Hi.
Letter B is the CASNET destruction authorization. This document allows the high school, and this sounds kind of funny, the way it's written, to destroy student files after they're put on a microfiche or otherwise digitally captured. What we do is we keep those things electronically and then destroy them. You can be hard copies. So that's that authorization.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Armstrong.
Hi.
Mrs. Bedio.
Hi.
Mrs. Matthews.
Hi.
Mrs. Powers.
Hi.
I've received a payment of transportation as usual at most board, regular board being required by state to pay parents of students who live in our district but attend non-public schools for which we do not provide transportation. So I'm asking the board to approve that. These payments.
So, second?
Discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Armstrong.
Hi.
Mrs. Bedio.
Hi.
Mrs. Matthews.
Hi.
And Mrs. Powers.
Hi.
Under D I S, the board to approve the disposal of two large chest freezers at Fish Creek, one at Fish Creek and one at Highland that are no longer functioning or that we cannot any longer get replacement for or support.
Motion? Second? Discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Armstrong.
Hi.
Mrs. Bedio.
Hi.
Mrs. Matthews.
Hi.
Mrs. Powers.
Hi.
Letter E, resolution authorizing bus bids through the Ohio Schools Council. This resolution allows us to advertise and receive bids through the Ohio Schools Council for purchasing of school buses. That's the word to approve that resolution.
So, second?
Discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Armstrong.
Hi.
Mrs. Bedio.
Hi.
Mrs. Matthews.
Hi.
Mrs. Powers.
Hi.
Finally, letter F, I wish to recommend the Board of Education approve the following gifts. And we will send a letter of thanks to the individuals who graciously donated these gifts. Steven Hilbert donated $2,500 to the Stow and Row Falls High School Spanish Club. Stow and Row Falls Band Parents Association, which we heard from this evening, donated miscellaneous band items valued at $32,612.40. Stow and Row Falls Lions Club donated $100 to the Stow and Row Falls High School close-up program. And Success is Intentional donated $100 to the Stow and Row Falls High School Speech Debate Club. And we thank everyone of whom for the donations they make on behalf of our students. Thank you.
So, second? Discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Armstrong.
Hi.
Mrs. Bedio.
Hi.
Mrs. Matthews.
Hi.
Mrs. Powers.
Hi.
Old business is not on the agenda. New business. A need for a possible executive session. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So, second?
Discussion? Needing adjourn. Thank you.